Well, I think we need to make a decision as a council whether we're going to just give everybody what they ask for, or whether we're going to create some kind of guidelines. And that's what the meeting was supposed to be partly about this evening.
Okay.
To make that determination.
I'm asking, what do you think it should be?
I think that we need to make that decision as a full council.
And I'm just asking for each of the council people's opinion on.
Make a decision as a council.
If we were to do a sliding scale reimbursement, we could do like, an example could be the, if the score was in, the average score was in the eighties or nineties, 100% of what they asked, seventies would be four fifths of what they asked.
Yeah, par-rated, yep.
Seventy would be three fifths of what they asked. You could go something like that.
I think we need to make that determination before we make a determination to award money. We need to have our parameters set before we make the determination to hand out the money. We're getting the carton for the horse here.
What do you think the, what is your ideas on it?
I think we need to have a discussion about the scores and the tallies that he presented to us. There's a lot of variance in what was just among the five of us and the way we scored things. I mean, raw data, you know, delineated for one person to technically get five points and some people gave zero and vice versa. Based on raw data, we're not all on the same page. It's because we never really sat down and decided how we were going to interpret these scores. So we have five different interpretations and we have scores based on five different interpretations. So.
But every single business has those five scores based off of five different interpretations.
Right, but you gave us, you gave us a rubric to look at. And one of, just one category basically was loss, proportional loss of employees. And we had numbers to, to assign based on their proportional loss of employees, based on their percentages. You know, one business might've had three employees prior and three employees post. So some of us gave a zero in that category because they had no proportional loss and other members gave them a five. So we are all over the board with our scoring. It's a mess. And these people need help. They are counting on us to give them help. And we promise.
What are your recommendations to alleviate the scoring differential?
How do you fix that? How do we fix that?
I think we need to make a determination on what data we have. I mean, it's never going to be a perfect system. This is, even if we discussed for at length, what we thought of the rubric and what a five means. At the end of the day, your five is never, my five. A good example, that would be if you tell me your pain's a five out of 10, what is your five out of 10 compared to my five out of 10? It's never going to be.
We were given guidelines to use. That's what I'm saying. We have raw data. It's not subjective when it's raw data. A number is not subjective. We had guidelines to use and we did not all follow them in like mind. Because we never had a discussion and people are counting on us.
Yes, they are, but there's five different minds doing this scoring. And there's also a bunch of them that have a blank on them too, for some odd reason. They never got the chance of getting scored, I noticed, on the tallies. But when you have five minds, like Cody just said, your interpretation of this is going to be different than mine, and different than theirs, we're going to score differently because we're five different people. We can have the same mindset. We all agree, these businesses need help. Nobody's saying they don't. I don't want these businesses to suffer. They are right now. I've got friends that have businesses here in town. We all do. We want to help them because they're our town. But yet, when we score them, the five different.
When you look, when you look at raw data, there's no interpretation, there's no subjectivity. And somebody's going to get more money than somebody else because they got a higher score that they did not deserve. That's what I'm trying to get the point across. We owe it.
Who says they don't deserve it? Who says they don't deserve it? Because they don't put a certain thing on a piece of paper? That's what we go by, raw data?
I'm not talking about how much money they deserve. I'm talking about the points based on the data. That was our job. We were to fill out these scoring rubrics based on the data that they provided. And some people got more points than they actually qualified for from certain councilmen.
Somebody thought that, that was because who put the higher scores thought that's what they deserved in their mind. I may not have ranked somebody as high as you. You may not have ranked somebody as high as me. Somebody didn't rank a whole bunch of people on there. There's a whole bunch of blanks on there.
Mike, let me ask you a question. If somebody had three employees before and three employees after, how do they get the maximum number of points for loss of employees? They didn't lose any employees. So how do they?
I agree with you there. They didn't lose any employees.
But they got the maximum number of points, which puts them at a higher place on the pecking order and gives them the potential to get more money than other people who applied. And that's not fair.
I'm not saying I don't agree with, or disagree with.
That's the point I made.
I understand that point.
I'm going to interject with this one though. Even if, you know, we have, you know, three of the five scoring it the supposed correct way and then two other, one the average, because we're going to score it, we're, each individual council member is going to score every business the same, the same mentality that they have. So wouldn't the average kind of go ahead and like, negate the air?
No, because with the average, they're still going to wind up with a higher overall score because they had more points going into it. Mathematically, they're still going to get more points and they're going to qualify for more money.
Okay, but isn't each council member still scoring it the same way they scored that business though? The same mindset into it? So therefore, it's going to be consistent across the board? For a council member.
It's going to give, it's going to give that business more overall points.
But what he's saying is that if I.
I get it.
Yeah, okay, so.
Okay, you've got one business that had three employees before, three employees after. So in that category, they deserved zero, 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 zero from the five councils. They didn't get zero, 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 zero. They got a five, a five, a zero, zero, zero. So you take 10 points, you divide that by five council persons and they get a two. They got two points they didn't deserve. So overall, they're going to rank higher and they're going to qualify for more money.
And we understand that.
But what about, again, let me go back to the tallies he's got. You look, there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of businesses.
They didn't get a score, Mike, because they didn't meet the eligibility requirements of the application. That's why they don't have a score.
And so the ones that needed, that they didn't have all the information, who knows why, maybe they didn't have it. Then one person not scoring them brought them way down.
It did not, because that's not how he divided the scores. We had.
He didn't put your scores in.
We had guidelines. They had to provide documentation to qualify. And if we're not going to follow the guidelines, then we might as well just hand out money and be done with that.
Yeah, that's true.
But it also kind of screws up the system. If somebody were to provide the documentation now and there is, the council has seen all of the scores and we rely on one or two members to go back and score that business, there is some possible bias or implied bias because the scores have been seen by all the members of the council.
So I think, I mean, what are we trying to accomplish here, I guess? So, you know, we could either go back and try to re-score all these. But I, I don't know that as long as each individual person, and you need to keep their scoring of each individual business consistent within itself, the averages still should be pretty good. Because not only is that person scoring, yeah, say this business lost no employees, but they got a five. As long as they're continuing that trend within themselves, it should technically average out. But the main question is, I mean, are we wanting to go back and do this? I don't think that's going to be effective or time efficient. I think that we need to either say, do we want to make a sliding scale based on the numbers that we have? Or do we want to award, award full, full compensation of whatever they ask for? And then additionally, because we're going to say, oh, you're either going to get a sliding scale or full compensation, do we actually want to continue to allow businesses to apply? Because then at that point, they can request whatever. There's no minimum score for them to get that money.
What are the thoughts from the council on what Councilman Nelson posited? President Protim Connor?
I'm not sure he asked a question. I'm, I heard him explain something, so please.
Okay, so my, I guess my rationale is if we decide that we are giving full compensation, should more businesses be allowed? Because they'll automatically be, we kind of spoke to that earlier. And vice versa, I mean, if we go the sliding scale route, then more businesses can apply because ultimately the score that they get will determine the amount of money. So I think we have two different options to go to.
So if we give somebody $5,000 because they applied and they didn't provide all their paperwork and somebody only asked for $1,000 and did give all the paperwork, do you want to explain to them why they, there's a $4,000 differential? And why somebody didn't have to do what was expected of them? I don't want to have to explain that to anybody.
I want to give a reasonable amount of time for them to provide the documentation. Again, I don't want to see the Oprah money go to waste.
I don't need, I don't either.
Let's make, I, I'm thinking, let's allow them to get that money.
So I believe the motion on the table is to award to the 12 and it's to give them all the money they asked for. And I know what we're discussing now is out of those 12 that provided all the documentation, do we want to do a sliding scale or do we want it to give it to everybody? So what are your thoughts? I guess, Councilman Kingery, do you have something?
Yeah, I was going to say with the 12, on the grant request that said up to $5,000, if a business only wanted to put $1,000 out of those 12, that's what they wanted. So we, we got the money again to be able to award that. So if they only asked for 1,000, we're only going to give them 1,000. We're not going to give them the full.
But.
Because that's right. So, I mean, I don't see a problem with going ahead and just saying, okay, you got what you requested. Because A, we still got the money and B, they're not going over the $5,000 request. And then C, they actually submitted all the paperwork that they, that was part of the grant, requested for the grant.
And Shane brought up a good point earlier. He said, what if that person who requested 5,000 scores in the lowest overall score? And then we're just going to go ahead and give them everything they requested?
So I guess.
Going by, going by the number of businesses that applied onto it. I mean, we only had, what, 166,000 out of 198 that we had? So I mean, we were going to give the money anyway at that point.
Correct.
I mean, if we gave them all 5,000, we're still underneath the 198.
So.
So why did we even ask them to fill out the application to give up their?
I think I make a motion.
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we give businesses one week to provide the documentation request that we award full amounts based on what they requested and that we do not allow further applications to be, I guess, applied for.
But I guess, that would be a motion amending, Councilman Isley's motion, because there is a motion on the floor. So if I could restate your motion, it is to allow another week for businesses to provide the proper documentation, but do not allow any other businesses to apply. Is that correct?
And we're not allowing any further business apply because we are awarding full amounts requested. That's, that's part of it.
Give me just a second. Is there a second to Councilman Nelson's motion? Second. All right, Councilman Isley with a second. Give me just a second. I need to write all this down, so let's just have some silent thinking time for right now. Okay, I got it written, written down. Thank you very much. I guess, the only issue I would have with that is that, I guess there's two things. One is that then we don't get up to that 198,000 total that we can use from OCRE. And secondly, we still don't know what OCRE's timeframe is going to be. So even if we just give a week, it could be multiple weeks before we hear from OCRE we're able to disperse those funds and guarantee we'll get reimbursement.
But then we need to have the documentation placed, correct?
Correct, but just because we have the financial documentation we requested doesn't mean we will meet the income verification.
That's true.
OCRE.
You're going to give away half that money.
Let's open it up for a discussion of Councilman Nelson's motion to amend. President Protim Connor?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Flora?
I'm concerned that if we don't open it, we had a business that attempted to get everything in, but for technical reasons, the application came in blank. I feel like that person has made an attempt and I hate to just shut the door on, on at least that, on at least that business that made the attempt that for some reason didn't get the papers to us to be seen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Flora. We next to Councilman Isley.
I'm in favor of nothing else to say. Thank you.
Councilman Kingery?
My only concern is not opening it up, back up for new business if we allow them time to give the documentation. But I got nothing else after that.
Councilman Nelson?
Yeah. I guess, you know, I, it's just, it's a really hard thing to negotiate because at the end of the day, it's like, we're either going to give 100% of what they requested. But then if, you know, further applicants, again, like, kind of, Councilman Connor talked about earlier, we're automatically going to be granting them the full amount they requested. So we're either okay with that or we don't allow any applicants, I guess. Or we don't award full accounts because we do sliding scale. So, I mean, kind of, I guess, just pick a direction.
All right, so the motion, the initial motion was to award to the 12, give them all the money that they requested. The amendment to that motion was extend the ability for businesses to turn in all their documentation by one week or until the end of this week. Do not allow new applications and give full funding to every business that had applied and provides all of the documentation. Councilman Kingery, or Councilman Nelson, is that correct?
Yeah, that sounds correct.
All right, is there any further discussion regarding that motion? All right, so I will call the question as to extending the period of providing documentation until the end of this week, Friday evening of this week, not allowing new applications and providing full funding to all businesses that applied. Full funding meaning the amount that they requested. Councilman Nelson, I just want to make sure I got that correct?
Yes.
All right, so I will call the question. President Protim Connor?
No.
Councilwoman Flora?
Okay, when we say full funding, does that mean if they only requested like half or a quarter of the available funding, that's fully funded, what they requested? Is that how we're determining fully funded?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, yeah.
Yes, for Councilwoman Flora. Councilman Isley?
Yes, the full funding.
And so your eye is to the entire motion? So do you agree with the entire motion?
Yes. If they request, you know, we had some that requested a little bit, some that requested the full thing. Evidently, the ones that didn't request that they needed at all, they're not being, they don't need it all. So, yes.
All right, Councilman Kingery, how do you vote?
I'll go ahead and say aye, just so we can get the, the money they need.
All right, an aye for Councilman Kingery and Councilman Nelson? All right, so we have four votes to the affirmative, one vote to the negative. The motion passes to extend the period to turn in proper documentation by one week. We'll do the end of the day Friday. No new applications permitted and fully funding the requests that were made.
From all 37 applicants?
That was my understanding. Councilman Nelson, is that correct?
Yeah, so as long as the documentation's met, yes.
So that, so it still begs the question of, wouldn't we want to cut checks? Knowing that if we cut them too early, we may not be able to get reimbursed from OCRE. So I'll open your thoughts up, going with the motion that was just passed of opening it up for the current applicants until the end of the week. When would the council desire to cut checks to these businesses? Would you want to do it next week or wait until we hear back from OCRE? I guess is my question. President Protim Connor?
I thought we just passed a motion to cut checks as soon as we get documentation. Which means we're going to have to use all of our funds if we don't have the OCRE funds. And then we lose out on getting reimbursed.
That's, that's not the motion that we passed. The motion we passed was to give another week for them to provide documentation, award who has applied at the full amount. We didn't specify how they would get that amount.
We didn't, and so we're going to have to go back and amend what we just passed because we didn't put specifications in it.
Right.
Oh, we can just have a new motion.
Yeah.
For that specific area because it was not dealt with in the last motion. So I guess the thoughts are, do you want to award or to cut checks next week? Or do you want to cut checks when we hear back from OCRE? Or I guess delay until we have a little bit more information? President Protim Connor, what are your thoughts?
I think we need to cut checks to the 12 who followed the guidelines of the application by May 7th because in the application, it assured them they would have funds by May 7th. They did what was asked of them and I think they need to be awarded. I think if you cut checks to everybody that applied right now, we're going to lose out on reimbursement of the OCRE funds.
Okay, well, the motion's already been made and passed to extend it until the end of the week. So the question is, do we award them next week or do we award them after we hear back from OCRE? So I'll go to Councilwoman Flora. Sandy, you still in?
I guess, yeah, I guess, I guess maybe I misunderstood too because I kind of figured that we were going to pay the 12 that have already done the application for the, the guidelines out of our fund now. And then the rest of the documentation, when we're waiting for the rest of the documentation, we were going to wait on them.
All right, I'll go to Councilman Isley.
I'm in favor of not waiting, you know? If we have to wait a week for information to give the 12 the funds, that's fine. But when we went into this, I thought that we had a rainy day fund, we had money set aside. Yeah, it's great that we've got a grant of $198,000 coming our way from the state, but we also said we had money set aside to help our businesses. If we don't get some money back, I'm sorry, but we're helping our businesses have a rainy day fund, so they need help now.
All right, before I go to the next councilman, Emily Albawal from Kersey just emailed me saying she would encourage us not to award the additional 25 until we receive more information and direction from OCRE. With that, I'll send it over to Councilman Kingery.
As she said, don't award the additional 25 after the, the 12 have already completed the application.
Correct, until we receive more information and direction from OCRE.
Okay, I would, I would wait for the OCRE, for the, for the documentation for the other businesses before we award any OCRE grant or potential OCRE money. But the first 12 that did complete the application and followed the guidelines, I say we go ahead and award the money too.
All right, and Councilman Nelson, your thoughts?
I was actually going to say the exact same thing as Spencer. So if all the, got their application time, we award them now out of the rainy day and then the additional 25 will have time to provide their documentation and wait for OCRE's response.
All right, so do we have a motion to cut checks to the 12 businesses in the full amount they requested that have this, all of their information provided this week and delay cutting checks to the other 25 until we receive more information from OCRE? Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mike Isley with the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who, who made the second?
That was me. That was me. Cody.
All right. We have a motion in the second to cut checks now to the 12 in the full amount they requested and then delay the 25. I'll open it up for discussion. President Protim Connor?
From what fund?
Oh, the rainy day funds are there already and available.
Are they available for what we want to do? I thought that was for capital outlay for machines and land and facilities. So do we need appropriate money from a different source?
But Judge, your, all due to your thoughts?
No, I don't think so. We have a general budgeted amount of 100,000 with no specification that it's for capital outlay.
And, and we do have the option of going back later and putting more money in the rainy day fund if we need it, correct?
At the end of the year, yes.
Okay. So I think we need, we need to add the wording to our motion as to where the funds are coming from for accountability. So I'd like to see us amend the motion to state that the funds will come from the rainy day fund.
I guess, Councilman Isley, would you be fine with amending your motion to say that?
That would be wonderful.
Councilman Nelson, would you be fine to second that motion?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to throw a wrench in this real quick though. So there is one business that did apply that is part of the 12 that does have more than 25 employees. And that was, I'm not going to say it's through service names, I guess, but there is one that does have more. It wanted, I think we would be, I guess, making the original application questionable.
Are you sure about that? I don't have any down that had more than 25. I have one that had 25, but not more than 25. Did we set our cap at less than 25 or did we say 25 or less or fewer?
Well, the green.
What does the application state?
Please hold it up. I just wanted to make sure before we got too specific here.
Does have 25 or fewer.
Okay, so they are good. Okay.
Everybody is good.
Yeah, then I, yeah, I'm okay with what Councilwoman Connor amended to the motion.
Since Councilman Isley and Nelson approved to amend the motion, we won't go ahead and get a motion in the second to amend. I still want to get further discussion. So the motion in second is to cut checks now to the 12 and delay the other 25 until we hear back from OCRE. The funds would be coming from the rainy day fund. Councilwoman Flora, your thoughts?
And I, I, I'm, yes, I, that's what, I, I'm on the board for that.
Councilman Isley, your thoughts? Do we need to do it? Councilman Kingery? Councilman Nelson?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, do we have any further discussion regarding the question before us?
We have total for the 12 businesses, how much to be awarded. Do you have anything handy?
I do not have a handy, President Protim Connor?
I'll get it for you in a minute. I, I want, I think we might need to ask Emily, when she applied for our grant, did she state 37 businesses? Or is that going to matter when she? Or is that going to matter when she goes to turn in her documentation and they only see documentation from 25? I guess it doesn't matter because it says the ones we selected, so I think we're good.
I, we, we did say around 40.
Okay.
Applicants, however, that is flexible based upon, you know, the number, obviously.
Okay.
And I guess, before I call the question, I did, I just went back to the business, and it does show that they have 26 employees, nine full-time, 17 part-time as of the date of application submission.
They're not one of the 12? So, at this point, they're not going to fall under the motion that we're making, but we'll have to consider that for later. That'll make them ineligible when we go after the OKRA money?
I think we did have them in your 12, President Pro Tim Connor, there was one councilperson that didn't score them, I believe that's because of the over 25 employees.
I didn't have them in my 12.
I scored them expecting that we would discuss.
Oh, wait, I see which one I think about. Yeah, that does throw them out, sorry.
There'll be the top 11, there'll be 11 then, instead of 12, is that automatically?
That a business, yeah, nevermind.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, yeah, so that'll take us down to 11, and the total we'll need to award is 49,100.
49,100.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay. So, we're playing.
Yeah.
I guess I'll go back. Councilman Isley, would you be willing to amend your motion to say we're going to cut checks now to the 11 that have all their documentation and 25 or fewer employees, wait on the other 25 applicants and take the funds from the rainy day fund? Would you be fine with amending your motion to say that?
Yes, I would.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any further discussion regarding this question? All right, I will call the question as restated, to cut checks immediately to the 11 that have full documentation and 25 or fewer employees, wait to cut checks to the other 25 applicants. The funds will be taken from the rainy day fund. I'll call the question, President Pro Tim Connor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Flora?
Aye.
Councilman Isley?
Aye.
Councilman Kingery?
Aye.
Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
All right, the motion is approved unanimously. Is there anything regarding applications or funding that we need to discuss at this point, and then we'll go on to what documentation we want to require of the businesses? But is there anything regarding applications or funding we would like to discuss at this point? Hearing none, we'll move next to documentation we would like to require the businesses provide that have been awarded funds and checks cut to them to show that they use the money in a way that meets the application requirements. I want to get your thoughts on what documentation you guys would request from those businesses. President Pro Tim Connor?
I think we need to go with the documentation that the application asked for.
I believe, I don't believe we discussed in the application what they would have to give us after we gave them the funds to show that they used it properly.
Oh, you're talking about for the accountability purposes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is that not going to come back to us from OKRA after they make their determination on our applications? I noticed in the letter from Debbie Gibson that there was going to be quite a bit of follow-up with documentation. Are they not going to give us those guidelines, or do we have to create that ourselves?
Emily, what are your thoughts on that?
I am not sure on that. I will double check. I'm not sure on type of what verification. The only direction that we've really received is just that income verification portion that we have to do upfront. I can follow up and get some more information. I do know that most of the justification is coming from the local level, but I will probably follow up and see what the state has to say on that.
I just noticed in the letter from the State Board of Accounts CPA that it required maintaining records, filling comments that provide an audit trail, appropriate approvals, et cetera, all part of good internal controls.
Right, which that would be completed, I believe, through your application process.
Okay.
But I will clarify.
Thank you.
So, I guess, ask the question again, I mean, do we just want copies of invoices? Do we want copies of checks that were sent out to show accountability of these funds? President Pro Tim Connor, what are your thoughts?
Can we wait and make that determination after we get some response from OKRA?
We can, however, if we're cutting checks to 11 businesses and they start spending the funds, you know, this week, it'd be nice for them to know what kind of reporting they're going to have to make back to us.
That's true. Can you contact Kayla Arnold and ask what kind of accountability documentation they asked for, because they, they did this at the beginning of April in Noblesville, and we're kind of following their model. So, rather than reinventing the wheel, can we maybe get that documentation from her? And then that's something you could put together and send out with the checks when you cut the checks?
Yeah, that would be fine. I'm looking to see, I believe I asked, I asked Kayla if she could send that to me, and I don't have anything from her at this point. I guess, would you authorize the mayor to put together the accountability documentation, 40s, well, I guess, all of them, so that we can get that out this week with the checks that we got?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
I have a second to that motion.
All right, so I've got Sandy Flora with a second. Give me just a second to write the motion down, then I'll restate it. All right, the motion that I have is to authorize the mayor to put together the accountability documents required of the businesses that are awarded to send with the checks this week, and then we also send them to any future awarded businesses. President Pro Tim Connor, is that correct restatement?
Sounds good.
All right, I'll open that up for discussion. President Pro Tim Connor, anything further?
I'm good with that.
Councilwoman Flora?
I'm good.
Councilman Isley?
I'm fine with that, I trust you.
All right, Councilman Kingery? Councilman Nelson?
Sounds good.
All right, I'll call the question as to authorize the mayor to put together accountability documents for reporting purposes to send to the awarded businesses with their checks this week and the businesses that are awarded in the future. I'll call the question, President Pro Tim Connor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Flora?
Aye.
Councilman Isley?
Aye.
Councilman Kingery?
Aye.
Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes unanimously, five to zero. We will move next to, sorry, I'm trying not to show sensitive information while I'm screen sharing. So, future steps, I believe we have that covered. Is there anything else beyond the additional appropriation? My thought is, we can wait on the additional appropriation out of edit until we hear back from OKRA. I don't think there's any rush on it. Is there anything else beyond that additional appropriation that the council would like to discuss at this time? President Pro Tim Connor?
Do you want a list of who owes what documentation so you can make those contacts?
Yes, ma'am, if you have it put together already, that'd be fantastic.
I do.
All right, do you have anything further regarding the Small Business Resilience Grant?
Not regarding the grant, no.
Okay. Councilwoman Flora?
No, I'm good.
Councilman Isley? Councilman Kingery?
Nothing.
Councilman Nelson?
Yeah, I guess I have one thing, I guess, I just want to put the feelers out for is when we're cutting checks to the 11 businesses that we discussed, some of those I think are maybe sold, no, they are odd ways, I believe, as Councilwoman Connor mentioned, but the additional 25 that are going to provide us hopefully with the documentation that we forward to OKRA for that funding. Some of those are sole proprietorships, and I think we should probably keep our thinking out for whether or not we want to award them some kind of amount, because it's unlikely they'll qualify.
I, I think we can wait. Emily's going to ask that question of OKRA. We should have more information next time.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Is everybody?
We have money in rainy day that we can award. There are three additional ones that fit in the category you're talking about, Cody. We have enough money in rainy day that we can award to those three if, if we decide we want to give them some money.
Yeah.
So, I think we can cover that. We just need to understand that those three businesses will not qualify us for reimbursement.
All right. Is everybody on the council okay with waiting on the resolution for additional appropriation until we kind of learn more from OKRA and get these, the rest of the documents in? President Pro Tim Connor?
I am. Are you going to notify the businesses?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, yes, I'm good with that.
Councilwoman Flora, are you fine with waiting on the additional appropriation?
Yes, I am.
Councilman Isley?
Yep.
Councilman Kingery?
Yep.
Councilman Nelson?
Yeah.
All right. So, that's all we have for the Small Business Resilience Grant. COVID-19, I just want to provide an update. At this point, City Hall is still close to the public. We've still been able to get people in here paying walker bills, well, their utility bills. They've been able to contact us with any questions and comments. I think we've actually seen a pretty good turnout at our meetings, even though we're holding them electronically. I did send an email out earlier today that said, after May 23rd, we will have to have our meetings in person unless the governor extends that portion of his executive order. So, depending on, I think we need to discuss when we want to have our next meeting, likely next week or two weeks from now. That one will be held electronically, but it's possible our June meeting could be held in person or must be held in person. At this point, the parks are also closed. Going to keep up with, try to stay on top of the phases that the governor has in place, but we also need to look at disinfectant and how efficiently we believe we can disinfect playground equipment, shelters and other areas. There's also construction going on at Riley Park right now, so it's possible we wouldn't have that open anyway at this point. Do you guys have anything further regard, regarding COVID-19 at this point? President Pro Tim Connor?
No.
All right, Councilwoman Flora?
No, I don't.
Councilman Isley?
The only thing is with our numbers in the county continuing to rise, we need to watch that before we jump into everything full force again and open everything up. I'll be the first to say I want to open parks and everything up 100%, but the week doubled in the last, in late, less than a week, so I think we need to watch that also when we get ready to plan ahead.
All right, yes, sir, I appreciate it. Councilman Kingery?